Okay, we're officially ready to start.
Good evening. We will call to order the April 28th meeting of the Pacheco Stormwater District. Welcome everyone. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty as its throne. All right, well, just a quick note about today's agenda, this evening's agenda. It is the correct agenda that was published, but I just want to note that it says at the top on the first page Parks and Recreation Commission. That was an error. So this obviously is not Parks and Recreation. This is Pacheco Stormwater District. But the rest of the agenda is correct, to my, as far as I can tell. All right, let's go to public comment. This is comment on any issue that is not on the agenda. And I believe Victor has an announcement for us.
The Pacheco Stormwater District welcomes your comments. Each individual speaker will be limited to a presentation total of three minutes. When addressing the trustees via Zoom, phone, or in chambers, state the name for your record in which you reside. Please address the trustees as a whole through the chair. If participating via Zoom, select the Participants tab and click the Raise Hand icon. If you're using your phone, please press star nine to raise your hand. When your turn arrives, you will hear that you have been unmuted. If you're participating in person at the chambers, please complete a speaker card identifying the item on which you wish to speak and provide your completed card to the clerk prior to consideration of the item. Speaker cards are available on the table at the entrance to the chambers.
Thank you, Victor. Is there any public comment?
There appears to be no public comment.
All right, we will move into the agenda then. First up is the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
A motion to approve the consent agenda?
Is there a second?
I second that.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the consent agenda is approved. Now we will move into the regular agenda. And our first item this evening is a presentation slash discussion with a representative of the Pollinator Partnership, Miles Dakin, who should be with us virtually. Are you there, Miles?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, welcome, Miles. Are you, are you there?
I don't have any sound, so hopefully folks can hear me.
Oh, you can't hear us? You can't hear us?
Miles, can you hear us now?
Yes, I can.
Okay, wonderful, welcome, welcome, Miles.
Does this work?
We, we can hear you. Can, can you hear me?
I can, yeah, thanks. Sorry about that.
No, no worries. I just wanted to say welcome. And if you could tell us a little bit about the Pollinator Project.
Yeah, I had a little feedback there. Yeah, so my name is Miles Dakin. I am, I work for Pollinator Partnership as our co-director of agricultural programs. And I have been working with Rochelle a little bit to brainstorm an idea for a grant application through the Wildlife Conservation Board to do some work on invasive species removal, as well as planting pollinator habitat along the levee. This is a really preliminary idea that we have to get some of this funding and to do some of this work. I don't have a presentation or slides or anything, but really the goal is to help remove as much of these invasive species as we can and then plant essential pollinator habitat along the levee to both support the structure of the levee itself, but also to provide resources for pollinators. And this, the Wildlife Conservation Board has a handful of grants that are on a rolling basis available now, but they don't anticipate the funding to really become available until the fall, but they are accepting pre-proposals now. And they have a variety of different propositions that fund these programs. Pollinator Partnership, we're a really large nonprofit. We're the largest pollinator-focused conservation group in the country. And we've had one of these Wildlife Conservation Board projects in the past. We did some work in the Central Valley out of a variety of different land use types. There was a duck club and a fish hatchery and a farm. And we put in a similar project, not invasive species removal, but Pedros along roadways and banks. So yeah, this is, like I said, it's really, really preliminary, but basically we're here to support, you know, you all as much as we can. And if this is something that's a priority, you know, for the Water District, we are definitely open to it. We're very successful at getting these types of grants and happy to sort of lead the charge in applying for these grants and helping to do the work. Yeah, hopefully that makes sense.
It does, thank you. We have an echo going here.
Testing, Miles, can you hear us?
It sounds like there's a lot of sound, but there was some feedback there, but...
Can you hear us?
Miles, can you hear us now?
I'm gonna check on what you see right now.
All right, well, in the meantime, I guess anyone that speaks is gonna get feedback. It's gonna see if there was any public comment. Right, but then he won't be able to talk, right? If he needs, right? Miles, can, if you can hear me, can you try muting yourself there?
Yeah, I am muted. I, it's, yeah, I'm having really bad feedback, sorry.
Hello? Hello?
We're gonna be having trouble with audio today, yeah.
Yeah, no worries. What I'll say is my email is available and I'm happy to set up kind of a more in-depth discussion. I know Rochelle is helping me with this as well. And I have a few questions that I've sort of prepared in a document to get some, start the conversation. I hope to have either myself or one of our staff people actually come down and visit. And so we're in a really preliminary stage now and I'm happy to sort of continue this conversation. There's no real rush, so, you know, with all the technical stuff and everything going on, it's, yeah, this is really just to sort of bring up this idea. And yeah, just, yeah, really thanks for the opportunity.
All right, thank you. Okay, so we're, we're okay now. So, um... Actually Rochelle, why don't you, since we're okay now, would you like to come up and talk just another couple of minutes about this? And maybe we could look at the map, although this is still preliminary. I think maybe one thing that, that we could just address at the beginning is why this would be a good idea for us.
Yeah, so I contacted Miles based on...
Yeah, actually, can we just turn off the mic? Is that possible?
Questions on that, like, do we apply as a district? Or do we apply as individual landowners? You know, so I think that's a clarification we need to get. He mentioned something, a budget maybe around $300,000. So if we look at that, okay, so I was approaching him with a way to handle, like, are there any, are there any funds or grants for invasive species removal? And he said, not specifically, however, we can work and kind of customize this grant for that, for those needs. So if we work from, you know, parcel map, based on that parcel map, if we work from our property down, I guess, through Michelle's property, which would include Paula's property, Michelle's property, Florrick's property, and our property, and then that one possible parcel behind me, that would certainly give us a good handle on the arondo. I think that's what it's called, arondo? Yeah, that bamboo stuff? That would certainly give it a good amount of space to clear out and burn. So what we'd have to do is, from what I've talked to local groups around here that have done that, you basically use the bulldozer or the excavator, pull it out, pile it, and burn it. And so $300,000 was a figure that Miles mentioned. I don't know if that's something that we're sticking to or how that qualifies based on, is it a square footage number or parcel? But it would certainly get us started in the right direction by getting that invasive stuff out. And then we would work on planting riparian or butterfly plants, whatever. I guess, you know, we can tie in to make it work, but I think it sounds great. What I also want to clear, get clear too is, is this removal, is it a one-time thing or do we do this every year? Same spot, different spots, I don't know. So I just wanted to put that forth to him too, because I'm not familiar with how successfully you can remove that stuff, but...
Yeah, I heard that stuff is really hard.
Yeah.
It's like a worldwide problem.
Yeah.
Well, thank you.
Yeah.
So this sounds like a sort of a creative way to get at something that we want to be doing.
Yes.
Clearing this stuff out. And then, of course, you know, as an added bonus, planting things that would be good for pollinators.
Correct.
That's not our main goal, but why not if we can do that?
Right.
I do have a question though. Let me see, maybe do you have an idea? How far down can you go? Okay, starting in... How far down can you go?
Oh, well, probably start to run into permitting problems.
Technically, we're supposed to be working from the banks and then we can reach and get with arms and excavators and things, we can reach and grab the loose debris without a permit, I guess you'd say. But we're not supposed to go down into, below the high water mark, which is a little bit below the top of levee. We're not supposed to go down into that area with equipment without a permit, if that answers your question, so, yeah. Now, if we're planting, that's different, but if we're removing things... Pardon me?
Just the top part we would be able to remove? The arondo, if it's growing on top of the levee versus not the slope going into the water?
Correct, and we'd still have to reach out to the agencies, but typically they'll let you work on the top of the levee, so to speak, just removing weeds and things, if that's a question, so...
So I will find out with Miles how they deal with the agencies?
That'd be great, yeah.
And I think most of the invasive species tends to be on top or in front. I see very little in the waterways. I don't know about you guys and your situations.
Yeah, I mean, he obviously don't want it on the paper.
Yeah.
But yes, that is a question about whether it has to be each property owner. And if we're talking about just a handful of properties or basically the people who come to the meetings, that might have to be the problem.
Correct, yeah, like, how many can we, you know, how, how far can we go?
Well, thank you. Do you need the trustees to have a question?
I know that I do have some of that arond grass at my levee area, but I'm pretty sure that if we were to go and excavate it and yank it out, there goes the levee too. So... Is it them also replacing that levee after they excavate that thing out, or...?
That did not come up, but that's a very good point. So you have a lot more like toward the water area?
There and on top and a little bit more, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, well, obviously, we're gonna, he's gonna have to come. He and his team are gonna have to come and look at each property and the situation, so...
Yes, and then he, what I need to find out also, if this is a district thing, then we're gonna need to have a kind of, I guess, a project supervisor or a person to handle this. And he mentioned also, well, you know, we do the work with the removal. We hire it out. I believe we pay for it upfront, but reimbursement does, is a guarantee. At least that was kind of the experience with the last project. So that might be another, another challenge, but at least we have something in the ball field or in the ballpark and we can decide how to go about it, so...
Yeah, so people on Zoom cannot hear us. You could only hear if you're watching us via YouTube right now, so... Yeah. We're in a tricky situation here. Yes, he's, he's been sending me emails. Um, let me send him an email, but... And by the way, your microphone is off, so people can hear you.
All right. So, okay, the microphones are all off, or...?
Uh, yours is.
Okay.
Yours was.
I just turned it on, on, I'm sorry. Okay. Oh, I see, so you're saying that even the people on YouTube couldn't hear? Got it, okay. Uh, all right, well, I think we can move on to the next agenda item. 5.2, update regarding debris removal and levee repair projects.
All right, Steve Matt, if you could bring up the presentation, please? Thank you. So Steve Lou, Public Works Administrator. Good evening, trustees, so we will start with item 5.2. So debris removal, as most of you folks know, the debris piles, all five piles have been removed, placed outside the levee. And the last debris pile to be burned is actually located at the northeast corner of Lover's Lane and Pacheco Creek. So we did reach out to the property owner and we're going to be meeting that person on site this Wednesday at 1:30. And ideally, the fire department will be there as well, because that debris pile is actually some nearby walnut trees, but according to the property owner, they're non-producing. So the thought is that County Public Works would go bulldoze whatever the fire department determines we need to bulldoze in order to burn the pile safely. Or there's a small possibility the fire department might just say you can proceed to burn that pile. And the property owner has their own workforce folks that can do the burning of the pile, so that's helpful as well. So that's the status on the debris removal task. And then for the levee repairs, the final contract for levee repair was finalized. Repairs are scheduled to proceed next week. And then on a separate note, separate project for the property located at the southwest corner of Lover's Lane and Pacheco Creek. That project, they've started to just build the ramp for the large equipment they'll be using. And then I believe also next week, the rock will start to be installed for that project. And so that is the status of the debris removal and the levee repair activities. So I'll pause for comments and questions.
Thank you, Steve. Do the trustees have any questions? All right, doesn't sound like we have any questions. Is there any public comment?
There appears to be no public comment.
Awesome. All right, Steve, so I guess we can move on to the FEMA status.
Status of FEMA applications for both the debris removal and the levee repair. So during the month of April, the spend plans were confirmed by two more units, so I've been told there is one more step from FEMA to have the reimbursement obligated for the debris removal. And once it's obligated, then we can essentially tell those folks, okay, the project is finished and please reimburse us for the work out there. And I believe the debris removal, at this point FEMA looks like they've agreed to approximately $900,000 for that work, which is close to what we requested, so that's good news. So fingers crossed, we're one step away from possibly being reimbursed. Now, knowing how the county projects have been obligated and not reimbursed, there still can be some time lag between the obligation and receiving payments, but if we can get, if those projects can be obligated for reimbursement, that's, that's a big step, so... So that's good news on that. And then also, it looks like yesterday for the levee repairs, a similar approval occurred within FEMA. That was the second step that occurred in April. And so that's, the levee repair is also one step away from obligation. Additionally, for the levee repair specifically, which I believe FEMA, looks like they're gonna obligate about $300,000 for that. We'll see, fingers crossed. But they also reached out to us and said, would you like reimbursement for administration, administration costs? And this is kind of a typical thing that occurs when we get close to obligation. And so FEMA sets aside 5% of the project costs roughly for administration costs. And so we said, yes, please create that project in the system, so they did. That stays on hold until the project is obligated. And then once it's obligated, they say, okay, it's obligated for X amount of dollars. We'll reimburse you 5%, and so we can talk more about that when we get to that step. But that's, for, I think for levee repairs, it came out to about $18,000 for the administration costs. So good news on both projects. FEMA proceeded with two additional steps during the month of April and so they're both one step away from being obligated for reimbursement, so...
That is very good news. Are there any questions from the trustees? Is there any public comment on item 5.3?
There appears to be no public comment.
Okay, wonderful. So we will move on to 5.4, and I see that's part of your presentation as well. So this is an update on the U.S. Army Corps Levee and Flood Plane Management Programs. Well, so let's take that part first. So we did send the letters, the letters of intent. And I guess that's about the only update. I've been trying to get another meeting with them since then and it's radio silence, unfortunately, so I don't know what's going on over there. I can only guess that it's, there's chaos there, it being a federal agency. So, but we did get our letters in and they did acknowledge that they received the letters. So that's the first step, so we did that. Yeah. Have you, you haven't heard anything else, have you?
I have not. I've seen your emails in that regard. I have not received any other updates. And you might be correct that that federal agency and quite other several additional federal agencies are trying to navigate the political waters, I guess you'd say.
No pun intended.
That's right, no puns intended. And regarding the historical report, we did distribute it to a couple other folks that requested the historical report, the historical report from 1973, but that's the update on the report, so...
Okay. Yeah, I guess at some point we will take time to actually look at the report? I don't know. Maybe we can, or do you think, or is it worth it? There's not really much there to...
It's up to the trustees. There's some interesting information. You can direct staff and we can kind of provide some bullet points, highlights, if you so desire to do that, but it's an interesting report. I encourage folks to read it this evening after dark. read it this evening after dinner. It's entertaining.
Actually, the most interesting part is the historical stuff at the beginning about buried treasure and all this other stuff. So, yeah, I don't know. Maybe we don't want to take the time to do that. But I think everybody has a copy of it now. So if you, I think you, both of the trustees were sent a copy of this. No?
I'll make sure it's forwarded. I think all the trustees have it, but I'll make sure to send it to everyone.
Email, yeah. It's fairly lengthy, so we haven't really printed it out or anything. Okay. I have one other thing to mention with respect to the U.S. Army Corps. And that is one of the things that we talked about with them in the one meeting that we had with them was about an operations and maintenance manual. And they said they had a template and I don't remember if they said they were going to send it or if, anyway, I found one. I just Googled it and I found their, the National Levy Safety Program Levy Operations and Maintenance Manual Template. So I know we've talked on a number of occasions about trying to put together such a thing. If we want to go ahead and try with this template, I mean, I don't, I don't know if it makes any sense to do it now, but we could. We have, we do have a template. So we could create like a little subcommittee to work on this. I don't know how important it is to do this now, but what are your thoughts on that, Steve?
I suggest we ask Army Corps for their guidance, perhaps during our next online meeting or the site meeting and ask them, because I think they had some thoughts about our levy assessment occurring before the operation and maintenance manual, if I recall correctly. So I think we need a little bit, I'd recommend we ask for a little bit of guidance before we jump into that document. That's my two cents on that.
Well, that would make some sense. I mean, I, I looked at it briefly and it it does call for some fairly technical information. And I'm sure there's a very specific way that they want it done. So maybe we should just hold off. But, but that is, it is there and that, that could be the template that we use. So.
Sounds good.
Do the trustees have any questions about this? Is there any public comment on 5.4?
Yes, we have a public comment in chambers. Rochelle, you may now approach the podium.
I just wanted to follow up with the trustees. Have we decided to move forward with the Army Corps on the PL 8790 application or 8499 program? Which would, again, if we apply as a district, we will get funding and assistance if we flood again. If we don't apply, then we get nothing.
Yeah. So you will recall at the last meeting, I mentioned that my impression from the one meeting that we had with all the, with the Army Corps folks, including the people that do administer the PL, what is it, 84? What's that? I always forget the number.
The PL 8499.
8499. My impression was that your levies have to be in pretty good shape. Now, I know that you had a different impression, you and Paula, when you went to the Levy Owners Workshop. So I was planning to ask about that at our second meeting, but the problem is that I haven't been able to get a second meeting. So I mean, I guess we'd have to make a decision about whether we want to just go ahead and try to apply for it anyway. Do we want to spend the time doing that? Or do we want clarification first about whether it's really appropriate for us?
Okay. My, my input based on that meeting is that I think it totally would be appropriate for us because it would give us funding when we flood again. I mean, immediately, they say, you're qualified and within hours, weeks, days, assistance will be given. So I don't know if that's an oversell. But I think that that would be very advantageous for us to pursue that. And regarding the O and M, Operations and Maintenance Manual, I think that we should start because I don't think it's, we're not going to be rejected if we're, you know, not, if it's not spec. I think that there's many ways that we could approach it. And I think if we just start collecting data and repairs that have been done, from what I understood, that's what they're pretty much looking for, you know, that we're not deadbeats and haven't touched the levy in 100 years. So at least we'll have, you know, maintenance records now that we can put in that magical binder.
Okay.
One other thing that I do remember for applying for the PL 8499 is that they just don't give it to you. They do have somebody come and survey and just check out the area. They will come out first.
All right. Is there any other public comment on this item?
There appears to be no additional public comment.
Okay. Well, I mean, at this time, there were two items. PL 8499 and the manual. So we could we could create subcommittees to explore both of those. What, what are the trustees' thoughts?
I can pursue the PL 8499.
Okay. Um, yeah, I mean, I guess we just need to find out what what we need to do, submit, what is the application process? And again, my, my point is not that it wouldn't be beneficial, because I believe it would be. My concern is that we're not ready, that we're not going to be approved because our levies are not in good shape. But, I mean, I guess we could apply anyway. So, um, all right. And as far as the, the operations and maintenance manual. Well, okay, so I guess Paula, if you, if there's anyone who wants to work with Paula on that, is there anyone here that would like to, okay, so Marcel? Is, would be interested. I know you two already have some experience working on stuff. Okay, so Paula and Marcel. Okay. And then on the O and M manual, is it, did, did you want to work on that? Or I could work on it with Rochelle?
My wife can help me.
Okay. All right. So and Rochelle, did you want to work on that? Because I know you've been talking about that for a long time. Okay, so Armando and Rochelle. Now, so this is working on the the operation and maintenance manual. I will send you the template. And remind me if I forget to do that. Send me an email. Okay. I think we're done with 5.4 unless there's any further, no, there's no further public comment on that, right?
No further public comment.
Okay, then let's move on to 5.5.
Great.
Yeah.
And regarding 5.4, Public Works, County Public Works will support both those efforts. So folks can reach out to me with information and I'm willing to meet offline to help with those two documents. All right, 5.5. Update on 2324 CDBG Disaster Recovery Grant. So before I go into the summaries, so first week of April, about three weeks ago, there were two webinars held by Department of Housing and Community Development and they occurred on April 2nd and 3rd. And they, during those webinars, they kind of walked you through briefly an overview of the action plan. And just to refresh some folks on the general big picture items. So for infrastructure allocations, our county actually receives or can, will receive hopefully in the spring of 2026, $1.9 million for rebuilding infrastructure that was not rebuilt previously, that were directly related to the storm events basically of the winter of 2023. And then in addition to that, the county is receiving, hopefully in the spring of 2026, $9.6 million for mitigation of future disasters. And so there's some criteria in the action plans that laid out how we can utilize those funds. The good news for Pacheco Stormwater District folks is the two largest impacted areas in the county were Pacheco Stormwater, Pacheco Creek area, one, and two, there was an area near San Juan Batista as 156 enters San Juan Batista at the Alameda. That's kind of the secondary that had some, some impacts during the storms. And there's an RV park over there and some things. So so those will be the areas where we focus the funding. And I already suggested during a previous meeting with the county and that group that the 1.9 million could be used to rebuild Lover's Lane. Because in a disaster event, just the status of that road, it's essentially a, you know, emergency access route. And so our position at the county is that it needs to be rebuilt just so you can get your cars and ranch trailers and livestock out of there safely. So tentatively, that's what the 1.9 million would be used for. The 9.6 million, at the very least, we're hoping it can be used for a study of the Pacheco Creek area, hydraulic study that we've been talking about. My guess is that would cost about a half a million dollars. But that's an important step in determining what repairs could be needed for the creek, for the levies, et cetera, et cetera, and how much water flows through there. And then, you know, we'll go from there depending on what the results of that study is. So a little recap on the infrastructure portion. Now, additionally, for folks that were on that call, they talked briefly about housing assistance and how if you have a private property in those areas and you have some funding needs, there's different kinds of funds available or loans available or all the above. I don't want to speak to that too much because it's, it's a pretty complicated funding stream. And so it's good. It's a very good thing, but there's, you know, private property owners would apply for those funds. It's not really accounting necessarily funding action, but, but there was quite a bit of money, you know, given to the state for housing assistance funding, for housing projects on private properties in a very good way. So that's the updates on those grants. And again, it sounds like the action plan will be finalized towards the end of this year and we might be able to make some opportunities moving forward in the spring. One thing that Public Works gleaned from those meetings is that if you go to this chart, the presenters at the meeting noted that they encouraged public agencies to ask for more than even they've been allocated because if some other public agencies do not utilize all of their funds, then those funds can be actually given to other public agencies with project needs. So we're going to over request above and beyond, I should say, those amounts that are shown there. So that way, if some other funding is made available through other counties and cities not utilizing their funds, then then we can possibly even obtain more funds than those that are noted on that chart.
Thank you, Steve. And I, I did log on to that Zoom meeting and I did ask a question about partnerships between water districts and the county. And I got a follow-up email that said that in the past, that that's been fine. They've approved such arrangements as long as there's a memorandum of understanding between the county and the district, which of course is not a problem. We can easily do that. They did note, however, that the, the actual guidelines for all of this are not going to be published until, was it the fall? Or I don't know, whenever, so in other words, there's, basically the idea was, yes, it should be okay, but we don't have the actual rules yet.
That is correct.
Yeah. So, but that's all good.
Very good.
So I have one question, Steve. Do you have any sense, or have they said, I mean, the, the money will be available in the spring next year. Is there a time limit for spending it?
Yeah, they mentioned five years from the moment that the program makes the funding available, you have five years to complete your projects. Which even for the county is possible. So that's a good thing.
All right. Well, are there any questions from the trustees?
No, I think so. I want to say there is a pretty good idea, but I think so the more important is just to try to fix the levy, right? It's the more important thing. I know that you mentioned that there can be another project like fixing the rope. But something that, that we know is a lot of heavy trucks. You know, driving in Lover's Lane. I don't know about San Felipe, but right now it's not that many. But I think so. See, they fixed the road, they had to put something assigned there. That rope is not for heavy, heavy trucks. You know? Because I mean, I know they fixed the roads and like two years later, it's no good again. So I know they spent a lot of money to fix it and they fixed it only for two or three years and I said.
So I concur and we've been looking at if we can put some signs on Lover's Lane and even San Felipe to say no truckloads over X amount. So we might be able to do that. And I also agree that we need to fix the road is with a pretty good structural section. So I think in, as regarding the levies and your question, I think the first order business is to do that assessment. Because we need to have, you know, a game plan for which levy areas are maybe worse off than others from structurally, structurally, a structural standpoint. So we need some kind of study to say, okay, the water goes through here, the levies should be this size or this height, right? And as part of that study, which we'll use the $9.6 million for, is to assess where the improvement should go on the levies, because I agree 100%. Hopefully, a big portion of that $9 million would be focused on the levies and maybe even cleaning up the creek also. And so I agree 100%. It's just, I think first step is to assess the situation to determine where we should put the funds. Because $9 million would go a long way, but we'll just have to be strategic about it. But absolutely, some of it will go towards repairing the levies themselves, for sure.
Thank you. And I will just make one comment about Lover's Lane. It seems to me that the area that you fixed after the floods in 2017 is still in pretty good condition. It's much better than the rest of Lover's Lane. So that's a good sign. And it's been, what? Seven?
Seven, eight years.
Years, eight years.
That's a good sign.
All right. Is there any public comment on 5.5?
There appears to be no public comment.
All right. Then let's move on to 5.6. And this is, I don't think this is one of yours. Steve. So this is the Fisheries Restoration Grant Program. Another one that Rochelle found out about. And basically, from my understanding, it is, okay, I printed out something here. The Fisheries Restoration Grant Program, the F- The Fisheries Restoration Grant Program, the F R G P, provides funding to restore and protect and 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 a drama and anodramus, anodramus salmonid habitat. Okay. So they fund implementation projects that restore, enhance, or protect and draminus salmonid habitat, design or planning projects that lead to process based restoration enhancement or protection of habitat. Okay. And eligible applicants are public agencies, Native American tribes, and nonprofit organizations. They've already closed their solicitation period for this year. They're now in the process, I guess, of reviewing the applications and then and then we'll permit them and and then award announcements go happen in December. So this, of course, would have to be for next year. But I I think the idea is that perhaps if we can convince them that our creek is habitat or was for steelhead, because I guess there's some indication that it was, that perhaps they will award us some money to make it more hospitable for those fish. And that might include, for instance, sediment removal. So. So then Rochelle actually also contacted our friends over at Santa Clara Valley Water District. And actually, Rochelle, would you like to explain? You you had an email conversation with our our friend John Varela over there.
So backing up, my first, as you mentioned, my first point of contact was to find out if this group would fund sediment removal from the creek. And he said, not specifically sediment removal, but they would fund it if it improved river function and habitat. So then I remembered that Valley Water District had done a whole thing and mentioned the steelhead up there. And yes, I reached out to John from Valley Water District and he gave a very good, nice response saying basically that. So this group wants wants the applicants to be in the focus area and they have a bunch of different areas which they call their focus area. We're not in it, but that's not a problem if we can prove. And so John's response was that that they certainly have a history that he said basically that just because we're not in the focus area doesn't mean that the projects in Pacheco Creek are ineligible because it does mean that justification for work in the location is necessary for a competitive proposal. For example, you might need to demonstrate that your project is likely to bring back steelhead. He said if we're interested in applying, that he would encourage us to submit a concept proposal before a full application. That's an optional idea, but they still recommend it. And he also said that we could reach out to Ryan and use their resources. Now, John's response to this question was that, you're not mistaken, Pacheco Reservoir Expansion Project includes steelhead habitat improvement of the creek through enhanced flow release from the proposed new dam. And they said that Valley Water's project team has studied the Pacheco Creek in great detail and that they analyzed habitat improvement potential using sophisticated numerical modeling. So although the creek may not be in the focus area, there are historical records of steelhead presence and the National Marine Fisheries Service designates Pacheco Creek as a critical habitat. So very positive for us. And I think Ryan McCarter, after we discussed this, I can reach out to him further and see if he can help us assess the grant program. So it sounds like Ryan McCarter would, you know, sit down, kind of give us the backbones of it, how to apply and make it our application worthwhile. So I think it'll be a good thing, predominantly focusing on sediment removal for this grant.
All right, thank you, Rochelle. Yeah, once again, I think it it's kind of a creative way to to get some funding to do something that we want to do anyway and that might have a good impact on on the environment. And I also like the idea of working with Santa Clara Valley Water District. I mean, we we talked a lot in our advisory board meetings about, you know, what we should ask from them once we got to know them. And we haven't asked any specific thing, but this might be a good thing for them to to work on with them. And maybe we could even bring in Pacheco Pass Water District, too. Pacheco, yeah, that's right. Yeah, the PPWD, the people that run the dam up there. That maybe we could all go in together on this, so.
Yep, so I think the next step will be for me to contact Ryan and let him know where where our point of view is with sediment removal. How do we get there? How do we go about putting forth a written proposal? So once I get clarity from Ryan and if it sounds good and we we want to move to the next step, then the next step would be submitting that concept.
Yes, now we might, I mean, we'll have to find out when the next concept proposal timeframe is. I guess this year it was Jan, it wasn't until January, but it'll take us a while to get everything together anyway, so.
Correct, and this will be for 2026.
Correct, yes, all right. Any comments or questions from the trustees? Okay, Steve, do you have any input on this?
Just to concur that historically, and I don't remember if it was in that flooding report from '73, but there was steelhead in this area. So I think I think we should go, you know, full steam heads, see, get some guidance from Valley Water and make our sum total for the next funding cycle next year. I think it's a very good idea, so.
Great. Any public comment on this?
There appears to be no public comment.
All right. And Rochelle, so once you get a response from Ryan, I mean, we can, we can start working on it. We have some time, so that's good. You know, we can have meetings and, you know, do something. Okay. The next thing is something that's been on the agenda for a while now, discussion and discuss and approve the creek cleanup by the California Conservation Corps. So I have a couple of things to say about this, but I wanted to, I want to see what, do you have anything to say about it, Steve?
No, I think where we left off last month was we were going to schedule a site visit either with some folks in this room and or even Army Corps. But just to walk the levees with the California Conservation Corps at a minimum. Obviously, they have a manager, I believe her name is Jeanette, and just get her opinion of what she thinks might be worthwhile. Look at some access areas. We said, I think we talked about some of the the top of levees are pretty, some dense vegetation at this point. So I think where we left it off was, you know, should we schedule kind of a levy tour, so to speak? But I'll pause there for input.
Okay. Yes, thank you. Yeah, I've been thinking about it. I mean, obviously, we need to see things on the ground because the drone footage, it was hard to tell what was going on there. But in thinking about it, you know, we are talking about private property and I I personally don't think it's a good idea to organize big tours of people's property, unless they really want us there. But I don't want to kind of call people and say, hey, we're coming with 10 of our best friends. You know, I think we should make this very minimal. I think it should be Steve and maybe one representative from the board. Or and maybe, or, you know, depending on what we're trying to do, like the, for instance, the California Conservation Corps. Although while you're looking at that, I guess you could also be looking at the vegetation stuff, I guess, some extent. But yeah, so really minimal, that's, that's my opinion. I feel pretty strongly about it, actually, now that I've thought about it. So I think that we can organize those, but very, very minimal people going out to look. So, do trustees have any thoughts about that? Yeah, no, so. Okay, I guess we can start doing that. We can start organizing that, one property at a time, I I guess, unless you want to have one day when you do all all of it, but.
Yeah, I'd recommend since this is a suggestion from Public Works, between some of the property owners in this room and a couple that we worked with in the past, we could pretty much attempt at least to walk both sides, both levees, between, you know, starting to upstream at San Felipe Bay, that bridge. You know, perhaps as best we can, walk down, I'll say, the southerly levee, so head west down to where at least where the the levees buy for Kate. And then somehow, if it's dry, I guess, we could jump over and come back. But either way, I think we could cover both levees in in a day or half a day even. It depends, I I'd highly recommend, I can reach out to the CCC's manager to have her come out and get some eyeballs and have her part of the tour if that's okay with the trustees.
Yeah.
Get her input. But yeah, I think, and then do the north side as well. And as you noted, there's some dense vegetation and whatnot, but maybe we set aside half a day and try to hit both levees as best we can, so.
How many properties are we talking about here? Do you have an idea?
I think approximately 10.
10?
Yeah. Maybe nine. It might even be 10, actually, but one, two, three, four, five on the south side and maybe four on the north side. Approximately 10 total, so.
Okay. Well, I guess we need to make sure we have contact information for all the owners and and that we can get their permission. And then I don't know if there's anything else that we need specifically, if we need anything in writing. I know Sean probably can't talk right now. Maybe we'll consult Sean about that, I guess, once we're reaching out to see if we need, if we need anything in writing.
Yeah, so technically, the district has easements over all those nine or 10 properties. I do highly recommend we get some kind of response from the property owners before we make the site visits. So maybe we send a couple of dates that works for whoever's going to be on the tour and we get a response from the property owners that say, yes, you know, you're allowed to be on my property this day between this time and this time before we actually perform the site visits, so.
Very good. All right, so I guess the next step will be that you will come up with a list that we have to reach out to. And then I don't know if you want to reach out by letter, like phone calls, both?
Yeah, typically, we'll we'll send out a letter. At least a couple of property owners aren't local. So send out a letter and ideally, if we can find their email address, do the letter and an email and see how that works and go from there.
And I guess it should be signed by the district.
Absolutely.
I can sign that.
I'll send, I'll send the draft letter to the trustees and you guys can review it that we use them for similar activities, so.
Wonderful, all right, thank you. Okay, is there any public comment on this issue?
There appears to be no public comment.
Great. Okay, now we move to the really fun stuff. 5.8, review and approve postcard mailer to district owners and the the logo, the new PSWD logo. And then I guess the sign as well on Lovers Lane. So, okay, let's see, what should we do first? Well, let's do the logo first. That's kind of a cool thing. So we now have a proposed logo and I don't know, it is in the packet.
Page 22 of the packet.
Yeah, there it is, in color. So there you have it. Thanks to Paula and to Marcel Beerly for their work on this. I like it. Does anybody have any comments? And oh, yeah, it is in the packet, so people in the audience can see it as well. I don't know, should, do we need to put it up on the screen or?
Seemed, can you display the screen, please, on the podium? Uh, next one. It's on, I I put it on the PDF now on the home screen.
Um, it's on, I, I put it on the PDF now on the home screen.
Okay, that's okay, I, I think it's all right. The, um, the trustees can see it. So, um, all right, is there any comment about the proposed logo? Okay. Is there any public comment on it?
There appears to be no public comment.
You can't see it. If anyone in the audience wants to see it, this is what it looks like. All right, well, I mean, I think that we can vote on this, right? Okay, is there a motion to adopt this as our district logo?
So Marcel, you did a beautiful job with this. And I motion that we adopt this as our logo from here on.
Okay, is there a second?
I second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we have a logo, very good. Okay, now, um, the second part to this is that we're still also working on the postcard to the, uh, property owners in the district. And so Rochelle was working on, put a lot of work into it. And then I worked on it a bit, on the, on the wording. And then we sent it to Victor, and it looks like Victor, so you have two different possibilities, is that what this is?
Yes, two different options that I was thinking would work best. So it's up to you to decide which you prefer.
Okay, so now would we, I, I do have one question. So the, okay, one side would be English and one side would be Spanish, right?
Correct.
Correct.
Okay, so these would be, how big would these? I mean, the idea is to, to, um, mail these, right? So would we be, they wouldn't be postcards anymore? We would be mailing them in envelopes? Or would they, could we shrink them, or would they be big postcards, what?
Yeah, so for the dimensions of this, it's eight and a half by 5.5. Five and a half, say, eight and a half, yeah, by 5.5.
Okay.
It's, it's half a, half a sheet of paper.
And where would their address be?
Well, it was.
Postcards, right?
Yeah.
Yes, um, could be modified to include a blank space so we can write the, the address of each, um, person.
I think, um, my suggestion is that maybe we, so, because, none of you can see this out there, right? It's only just, okay. Maybe we can table this until next month or next meeting and then we can actually look at it up on the screen. Or, or we can, um, have a, like, subcommittee meeting just to, I mean, this is, they look beautiful. I guess we just need to, it doesn't sound like we can, not today. Um, why not, I know we've been working on this forever, but at least we have a logo. Um, why don't we, okay. Um, and thank you, Victor, because these do look, these look beautiful, they really do. So why don't we have a subcommittee to work with what Victor's done here and just sort of put the finishing touches on it, including the logistical idea about, well, how big is this going to be? And is there room for people's address and, and that sort of thing? The other thing is, I had originally thought that maybe we could list some of our accomplishments so far. But that's, there's no room for that in these. It's more, it's more pictures, which maybe that's a, maybe that's better. Maybe it's better to have pictures. I had thought about, you know, actually listing some of the things we've already done. But maybe that, maybe I should just send a separate letter to everybody. Okay, so who, I, I mean Rochelle, you've worked on this a lot. Paula, you and Marcel did such a great job on the, yeah, okay.
I can, I can also work on this one.
Okay, so you want to work with, I mean Rochelle, do you want to still be involved in this? Okay, so why don't, why don't you take a look at this? I'm going to send both of you also some language that I had come up with. I, I mean, we don't, again, we don't have to put that in a postcard, and maybe it's too much for a postcard, but I'll, you know, because the pictures are nice, I mean, they're very eye-catching. And maybe that is more important, so. All right, so we will keep working on it and, and then the sign, well, we don't really have any kind of an idea about the sign, right? About what to put on the sign, the sign on Lover's Lane. Do we, does it, we haven't really talked about that, I mean, we.
This almost looks like a good poster that can go on.
Yeah, actually, yeah. So, yeah, you're right, because then it could be really a lot bigger. Um, all right, well, maybe we can decide that at the same time in the subcommittee. Okay, because there are a couple different options here that we have to choose from, so. Okay, then let's do that. Um, is there any public comment? Any further public comment? Yes, Marcel.
Marcel Bearely, San Felipe wrote, um, in regards to the sign, that's the four by four foot sign. I think the last time we talked about it and I made some suggestions on possible layouts that's already done, but we were waiting for the logo. So once, so now I can incorporate the logo. And if Paula and Rochelle doing it, then I'll just give you that information that I have. Um, because it was like, uh, with a QR code, you, you know, take your cell phone, you just, and you're right at the website. So there's a tiny URL converter and all that, so the, so the idea is already there. I have some preliminary layouts and I can just provide it.
Yeah, I mean, you might want to, I mean, this, this actually looks like what you just described. It even has the QR code, so, um, but thank you, yes. Now we can put it all together since we do have a logo now, so. All right. Uh, is there any other public comment?
There is, there appears to be no further public comment.
Okay, we are getting there. Uh, oh, okay. So the next thing we need to do is choose our next meeting date because our regular meeting date is on Memorial Day. So, um, we have a couple of options. We could reschedule it for the week before. Or, and this is my favorite option, we could just skip the May meeting, since we have all these subcommittee meetings that we have to do. We have all this work to do, right? We could just skip the May meeting and go to the June meeting, which would be June 23rd. But I don't know if we have anything, I mean, I know the postcard, but do we have anything else that we have to, that we might have to vote on urgently? What are the trust, trustees' thoughts on this? Skip May and then have the, I mean, we have, and then in the meantime, do all this other stuff that we talked about. And then come back in June, June 23rd, and hopefully, um, be able to make some more progress on this stuff. Or, or if, you know, or we could meet on, I guess it would have to be May 19th. Because then June, I mean, that would, so May 19th, that's three weeks from today. Or we could do June 2nd. Does anybody have any thoughts on this?
Let's just skip May.
All right. Is there a motion to cancel our regular May meeting? And, um, yeah, just cancel our regular May meeting.
Yeah, a motion that we cancel the May 26th meeting and resume on June 23rd.
Is there a second?
I second that.
All those in favor? Oh, wait, I should probably ask for public discussion about this. Okay, before we vote, is there any public comment on this agenda item?
There appears to be no public comment.
Okay, all those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, so we will not have a meeting in May. Our next meeting will be June 23rd. And in the meantime, we'll have, um, plenty to work on. So. Okay, the next item is discussion of future agenda items. What do we want to see, um, on that agenda in June? Obviously, we have a lot of things pending. Anything in particular other than the things that are pending? Okay, is there any public comment, any suggestions from the public?
There appears to be no public comment.
Okay, well, then I don't think, we don't have to, oh, okay. We don't have to vote on anything, um, we will, oh, yeah.
I just wanted to ask, when is the election? Are we doing that in June?
July, I believe.
July, okay.
I have a, hold on, I have a calendar here. Um, the ballots go out July 9th. Okay, the actual election, quote unquote, election day is July 29th.
Correct, and from April 7th to May 2nd, candidates can now, um, file the paperwork to be considered on the ballot.
Yeah.
April 7th to May 2nd.
Yeah, so really, the end of this week, the paperwork has to be filed for anyone who wants to be considered. There's a, there's a bit of an extension for people who are already on the board. Uh, but not much, only five days, so. So yes, um, while we're talking about it, I was going to bring it up in the announcements section, but, um, I encourage anybody who would like to be on the board to, uh, to pull papers, as they say, by this Friday, May 2nd.
Yes, or, um, correct, Elections Department.
Yeah, I'm sure if you just go there, they'll probably give you, give you all the information and all the paperwork that you are, is required, right?
And they're located at 1601 Lana Way.
Correct.
Right, yes.
I believe in the elections, uh, County Elections website it is, yes. Um, no, it is not, no.
Well, I mean, we could, could, I don't, how much trouble is it to put it on our website, on our?
Um, I can include that, um.
Although, I mean, the deadline is Friday, so I don't know, maybe it's not worth it. Maybe it's not worth it. Um, yeah, you know what, I don't want to create any more work, so. Yeah, well, ideally, I guess we would, we could have sent out postcards and that kind of thing, but anyway. What's done is done, so, um, we'll just hope that we get some people interested, so. All right, uh, let's move on then to announcements. That was going to be one of my announcements, actually, so, but we've already taken care of that. The other announcement is just a reminder that there is this group that meets the Pajaro River Watershed Network. And they had a meeting earlier that I was not able to attend. I think it was at the beginning of March. But they're having another workshop, and this one is virtual, actually, June 10th. Uh, I mentioned this last meeting. So if anybody wants the link, um, I think I sent it out, but I can forward it again. Yeah, it's a Tuesday, it's Tuesday, June 10th, from 9:00 to noon. And it's an online workshop, and it's a series of workshops. And the topic for this one is prioritizing vulnerabilities and planning for resilience. And this is the Pajaro River Watershed Resilience Program. I'm looking at it as primarily a networking opportunity. But I think we could, we could learn a lot and maybe introduce folks to us, too. So I'm, I'm hoping to go, I think I, I should be able to, but. Wanted to announce that. Do the other trustees have any announcements? No? Okay, then I think the only thing that's left is to adjourn. Is there a motion to adjourn the April 28th Pacheco Stormwater District meeting?
A motion that we adjourn April 28th meeting and resume June 23rd.
Is there a second?
I second that.
All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, meeting is adjourned, thank you, we'll see you all in June.